I'd like to call the village board meeting to order for Tuesday, May 27, 2025. Roll call, please.
Trustee Service.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
Trustee Flukie.
Here.
President Kardowski.
Here.
And Zerbal and Atkinson are excused.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried, number five, action on the minutes from April 15, 2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. Hard to believe that that was just the week before the draft, huh? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda, must state your name and address. You're limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody from the public who would like to make a comment about something not on tonight's agenda? Any public who wants to make a comment about items not on tonight's agenda? We have no public here that's coming forward, so we're moving on. Number seven, written communications or announcements. Does anybody have any announcements? Nope, hearing none. I'm gonna step down for just a minute. Could you come with me, please? She's leaving us.
Nobody move.
I know, don't move, yeah.
Nobody moves.
So we did have, five weeks ago, we had this little thing called the draft. And in talking to people in the NFL, the Green Bay Packers, PMI, our local other elected people, the draft, I don't feel, would have been carried off as well if it wasn't for five very important people in our organization to make this draft work. So, we have made a plaque that will forever hang in Village Hall. The number one thing when the draft came was safety. We knew that there would be hundreds of thousands of people here. We wanted to keep them safe, and we did keep them safe. That was number one. We wanted to have them enjoy our community, show them a good time, and want to come back to our community. And today, I ran into this little note that I have no idea when I did this little note. But, I thought it was very appropriate for today. Coming together is a beginning, staying together is progress, and working together is a success. And these five people worked together very, very, very well. So, I already have Joel up here. I would like Brian Rickert to come out, Tom Rowling to come up, Nick Kozlowski, and Tom Baxter. Everybody knew how hard you guys all worked. I was here every day, and I'd listen to the emails at 11 o'clock on Saturday night, three weeks before the draft, and this was an issue, and we had to fix this issue. And, like I said, just keeping everybody safe, and it would not have happened without the leadership that we have up here right now. So, I will let you read this, Joel, because I can't read and hold it up to say.
Alright, sounds good. The plaque says, "In appreciation of service and recognition of all employees for their exceptional dedication, collaboration, and leadership in coordinating the 2025 NFL Draft, with special recognition to Joel Gregazewski, Brian Rickert, Thomas Rowling, Nick Kozlowski, and Tom Baxter." Thank you very much.
Thank you. So you will forever be hanging in Village Hall.
Good thing I wore black.
No, I've said this to so many people over the Memorial Day weekend, that you should just really, really be proud to be from Ashwabnon, because if you saw the team, and it was everybody, it was all employees in the village, how hard they worked. It was amazing, so, thank you.
Good job, guys.
Good job, you guys.
Okay, so that was the fun part of our meeting.
You know, Mary, I just want to say a few words. I had a half-hour speech congratulating this whole staff of the village of Ashwabnon. I was, knowing it was in my district for awards three and four, that's where the main focus was for the draft. It was a mess with traffic. But I want to say to all you people, you've done an excellent job. I can't thank you enough. I've talked to you in person periodically, much before the draft, prior to the days coming to it, and I tried to get involved in it a little bit through the three days that you had worked. But, like Mary said, safety was number one. When the draft was announced in Green Bay, I said that myself. Safety is the number one. We don't need to be on headlines for something that happened here that basically took lives or some stupid thing like that happened. And Mr. Rowland, I believe your staff have done an excellent job in protecting that. But the rest of yous did your job for whatever your positions were in. So, again, I just want to thank all of yous. It went well. We broke all kinds of records that the NFL really projected early in the year. So you did twice as much work as what was expected because of the number of people. So, I didn't hear too much complaints from the neighborhoods, so we all put up with it, and it worked out well. So, again, thank you.
Okay. Any other written communications or announcements? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. 8A, consider-discuss act on assistant finance director position description. B, consider-discuss act on paralegal confidential executive assistant position description and authorization to proceed with recruitment hiring of position. C, consider-discuss act on resolution R 5-2-25, approving the Ashwabnon 2024 Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. D, consider-discuss act on the bid award for the 2025 traffic signal replacement. E, consider-discuss act on the bid award for the rectangular rapid flashing beacons on Cormier Road and Holmgren Way. F, receive/accept May 2025 Public Works Department report. G, receive/accept May 2025 Parks, Rec, and Forestry Department reports. H, receive/accept April 2025 year-to-date financial reports. I, consider-discuss act on annual investment policy review and reports. J, consider-discuss act on annual finance policy updates. And K, consider-discuss act on the budgeted expenditures for periods between 3/21/2025 to 4/10/2025. We have these on the consent agenda because they have all moved through committee. If anybody would like to pull anything, feel free.
Can we pull 8E, please?
8 what?
E, as an elephant.
Okay, 8, we're gonna pull 8E as an elephant.
Or Edward.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with taking out 8E as an elephant. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, Tracy, 8E.
Okay, I just had a question. Brian and I talked about this earlier today, a little bit. This was discussed at the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, and at that time, the committee had asked if Brian could look at the design a little closer for the two RFBs, because they're four-lane roads, look at the crosswalk design, if it should be a high-vis crosswalk design, and then look at start bars. Because of the award he just got, he's been swamped with the draft stuff, so he has not had a chance to look into it. And Brian, please correct me on any of this. So what I would request is, we give Brian a chance to look into the design of that a little bit closer and see if it's what he would like to see out there, and make sure the bid is for what we would like.
Okay, so, I guess I'm gonna ask, Brian, are you comfortable with what we have? Or do you want to see something different, or?
Yeah, so, I did review the design itself to make sure it does meet standards, and it does. There definitely is additional modifications you can make to make that crossing safer. I'm not gonna say that there isn't. If there is a desire to have it look different than any of our other rapid flashing beacons within the village, it does have an overhead trombone arm that will capture, since there is four lanes of traffic, allow that centermost lane of traffic to be aware that there is a pedestrian waiting at the crosswalk. With that, you can definitely add additional lighting. You can make the crosswalk so instead of two white lines, it's a ladder-type configuration. There's various things that you can do. Of course, they all come with cost. If there is a desire from the board to, we'll say, upgrade that rapid flashing beacon from what you may see standard throughout the village, by all means, I'm open to it. And that's all I have at this time.
Ryan, have you had any problems with accidents of any nature at all? Has it been safe?
Yeah, so, Nick would be the one to actually speak on behalf of this, but I think there's been one accident actually out on Cormier where a pedestrian did get hit. It's my understanding, if my memory serves me right, that that pedestrian was intoxicated when they were trying to cross the roadway. They did not cross at a crosswalk. Other than that, there hasn't been any pedestrian motorist accidents there. So, ultimately, we're trying to get ahead of the problem that could potentially be there as we look to add this development in the northeast corner of Holmgren and Cormier, and then when the traffic starts to flow a little different from a pedestrian standpoint between the Epic Event Center and the stadium.
Are there other signals, traffic affairs in the village that are like that? Right now, with how many pedestrians walking through it, and what is the count of problems there?
Joel, so, the only one that's close to this would be the one on Ridge Road, but it is a little bit different. You know, the traffic flow is different in that area than it is at Holmgren. And then obviously, it all really is driven, the pedestrian traffic's driven by events. It's not like, you know, there's a mall or something like that that has continual flow of pedestrians. It's all strictly event-related. So, with that, the rapid flashing beacon on Ridge Road is a Cadillac. It is very, very expensive, probably about a $300,000 rapid flashing beacon. For this rapid flashing beacon, we're installing two of them for $130,000. So, there definitely was some value engineering that was done to be sure that we're getting what we need, or, you know, at a fair price, and then also being sure that it's easy to maintain. So it's very similar to our rapid flashing beacons at Cormier and Shady and Cormier and Santa Barbara.
I just wanted to add, from a process standpoint, tonight's action is on awarding the contract for work, not necessarily in the discussion of the scope of work that is being prescribed as part of this. So, what you'd be taking action on is the actual bid award, which was based on a specification design that was previously approved and discussed, either both as part of the budget process, so that's how the project ultimately gets scoped out, or at the committee level through some of those deliberations. From administrative's point of view, I would recommend, you know, if this is a project that you would like to see go forward, awarding the bid, and if there are changes to the design scope, such as increasing the amount of striping on the road from a two-line to a laddered line-type crosswalk, or having those yield bars, if you will. In Wisconsin, we are a yield to pedestrian state, not a stop state. So it'd be what they commonly refer to as shark teeth. So you see those upside-down triangles on the street that indicates where vehicles should yield to the pedestrians as they approach the crosswalk. We can certainly entertain that with the contractor that's approved. It would just come in the form of a change order because the paint design has already been established as part of the project's scope. So, again, I would kind of refer back to the item that's being discussed as the actual bid award. If you want to have further deliberation on the actual scope of the project, then I would, you know, maybe recommend having that come back to the board if that's something that's desired. And then we would process that through a change order effort like we would any other project that has a change in scope.
How much was initially budgeted for this? Is it $135,000, Brian?
Yeah, no, so initially budgeted was $300,000. So, what we did is, we looked at, ultimately, we borrowed numbers from different adjacent projects nearby. A lot of times you'll see what's called a monopole, which is just one pole and one large arm, which is what you'll see out on Ridge.
Yep.
But instead, we're gonna have a pole on each side of the roadway, and it's gonna have a trombone arm coming from both sides. Essentially, what we did is, we looked at ways to try to make our dollar go further, but still accomplish the similar result. There definitely is things that we can do to enhance it. I mean, you could, Tapco offers any device that actually, when you push the button, it actually shines lights down out onto the crosswalk. There's a lot of things you could do to enhance safety. It's also things that you can retrofit later, too. You know, if it becomes that there's a known problem here, that what our current configuration is, isn't working, you know, adding the additional pavement marking or signage or lighting, it's things that could be done if there is a desire to do.
So I wouldn't, she's saying, and based on what Joel said, you know, we have room in the budget. Award this bid, and then understand that, you know, we're looking for additional safety features. What are those gonna be and handle them with change order? Because the money's budgeted there. Let's award, and then, and then let's, you know, add that after. That would be my suggestion.
And I would agree with that. The reason I bought it up is I didn't want it awarded, and then after the fact, we go, oh, we want something. So I wanted it at least bought forward, because this is gonna be a high pedestrian area. The reason we're putting this in is for the safety of the pedestrians moving through this area. And if there's some things we can do to enhance it a little bit, you know, we have three driveways coming out of that new subdivision, or subdivision, the apartment complex that's going in. That adds to the intricacy of this intersection. We have the lights, you know, I don't know, 400 feet up. So it's a very busy area, and I'm fine with that. I mean, we could award the bid, but I just think we need to look at it, give Brian a chance to look at it, and us to think about both of those crossings and make them as visible as we can so that we're doing what we want to do. We put these in because we wanted pedestrians to be safe. Let's make sure that they're safe as we can get them to cross the, because it's a four-lane road, and there's a lot of ADT, and there's speed out there. So, let's give them a good shot, and let's do it the best we can.
And is it busy now, or is it gonna be busy after whatever time period?
As far as the intersection goes, obviously, it's, these are being placed because of what we anticipate to be a higher pedestrian volume, interacting on both Cormier and Holmgren Way as a result of the parking lot that's being constructed for the Navara Project. So that's the apartment mixed-use development on the corner of Holmgren and Cormier. That parking lot's gonna be used to serve both the Epic Event Center as well as the Capital Credit Union Park. So we anticipate there to be quite a bit of crossing on Cormier, and that was really the bulk of that. And then because of Capital Credit Union Park and the amount of parking that occurs within the neighborhood itself across Holmgren, we've always struggled, I think, to create a higher degree of visibility for pedestrians crossing Holmgren to get to the stadium. So, you know, I just want to mention, too, that if we are looking to make change orders, it's probably gonna be on simple matters like pavement marking schematics versus changing it from a rapid flashing beacon to a hawk signal, or as Brian had alluded to, bringing additional lighting features. That wouldn't really fit within a change order, per se, because they're gonna be ordering the equipment. But as far as pavement marking schematics, those can be relatively easily changed. The only thing I'll add to that conversation, too, to help with staff, is typically municipalities will have what's called a typical specification manual that's ultimately approved by the governing body. So you have what's called the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, MUTCD, that sets the basic lawful standard for these types of situations. But there are options that individuals can do that can conform to the MUTCD. And those options range from minimal application to kind of like what would be the highest degree standard. So oftentimes municipalities will create these typical specifications that conform to the MUTCD but achieve the desired results that the municipality has, somewhere in between that minimum to the maximum.
Makes sense.
We don't currently have that. I know Steve, Brian, the Public Works Department, that's definitely high on their to-do list to get that done. And then ultimately, that would be the guide that staff would have for when we prepare bid specifications for future projects that incorporate these types of infrastructures or amenity features.
Okay.
I think having that discussion, I'll make the motion to award the rectangular rapid flashing beacons on Cormier and Holmgren to Bodart Electric, an amount of $135,163.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award the bid for the rectangular rapid flashing beacons on Cormier and Holmgren to Bodart Electric for $135,163.
Under discussion, can we put something on there, or does staff, that we would like them to look at, additional safety features? Can that be added to the motion?
I'm good with that.
Second. Okay, so we'll add that staff can look at additional items. Okay, any other discussion?
I'm not gonna go with this. I agree, if it's needed, fine, but at this point, no.
Okay. Everybody understands the motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
Okay, thank you. Number nine, action items. 9A, consider-discuss act on a Class B beer/Class B liquor license temporary extension at Titletown.
I'll take that one. Titletown is requesting a temporary premise extension for their Class B beer/Class B liquor license for their Summer Fun Days showcase. That's their kickoff event for their summer concert series. That date is scheduled for June 7, 2025. The extended time period will go from 1:45 PM until 11:00 PM. And the temporary extension covers the asphalt parking lot to the north within Titletown that will be barricaded for people coming and going within the licensed premise area. There is a representative from Titletown here, if any members of the board have any questions.
They're not gonna allow parking in that area then, correct?
My understanding is that will be closed off for parking. My understanding, too, and maybe you can comment on this, is that in the past for the Summer Fun Days concerts, they used to close Ridge Road and then extend kind of the stage area into the Lambeau Field parking lot. That's not the plan this year, is that it will be wholly contained within the Titletown District and not close Ridge Road as a result of that concert.
So this is another road closure, too?
This is not a road closure.
Not a road.
Not a road closure, so, this should make you happy.
That'll make somebody happy.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the Class B beer/Class B liquor license temporary extension at Titletown. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 9B, consider-discuss act on consent to collateral assignment of development agreement with Merge Urban Development Commonplace on Mike McCarthy Way LLC.
Alright, this is a request by the developer, Merge, as well as their new lender for a refinancing that they're going on. Typically, this happens after a period of time with various development projects where they undergo a refinancing. As part of that, the lender, the new bank, has requested this draft consent from the village with respect to using the tax increment proceeds as security, in a sense, for the existing development agreement. So, typical request. I've had a chance to review it and propose changes, and so we'd recommend approval of this consent.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the collateral assignment of development agreement with Merge Urban Development. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 9C, consider-discuss act on acceptance of a Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Vibrant Spaces Grant for the Clipstein Park Band Shell. Aaron.
Alright, thank you. The village was notified of an award of a $50,000 grant to be put towards the new Clipstein Park band shell from the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. This was applied for late in 2024. It was not a budgeted grant application, but the matching funds are secured through donations and the overall project. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Good job on the grant, Aaron, putting that together.
I'll take partial credit for the team effort.
I heard you fixed it, though, so.
Free money is good.
Exactly.
Definitely approve.
Yep, move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Vibrant Spaces Grant for Clipstein Park Band Shell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 9D, consider-discuss act on a recommendation to amend emergency medical services fees and charges.
Yes, so, in the handle tonight, you'll see, under a survey sheet that we have, that first, or I guess it'd be the third from your right column, shows our current charges for the basic charges we have for rescue. We haven't had an increase since 2021 with our rescue fees. So, we had our third-party collection company do a survey of where we should be at, and the rates that came in, we didn't feel we should put on for 2025. But since we're in half of the year, let's raise them a little bit. Excuse me, and that's why you see that from the second to the right column, we are requesting these changes. Excuse me. And then in 2026, we would increase them again with those rates that you see on the far-right corner. With that being said, again, it's been four years since we had our rates increased. We, as a department, need to do that on a yearly basis and come to you, obviously, with what we feel are changes, a little bit easier to swallow than what we're seeing right here. But this is our recommendation.
Tom, does that keep you in the realm of the other ones in the community?
Yes. If you look at all those other ones, the white columns.
I guess the only question I'd have on it, Tom, does the third party help us out to know from an insurance standpoint? Is it, if the rates go up, are the people gonna end up paying? Because most of the time, insurance picks a lot of this up.
Correct. And if you look at that second listing that I have in there, you'll see what Medicare and Medicaid actually pay per, which you're gonna find substantially less. But that's all they'll give us for certain calls, again, based on what their insurance needs are. So, again, this is, and yes, that company does a great job at providing for us, again, what the communities have, and I think try to keep that in a cost basis for insurance.
Okay, I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend to amend emergency medical services fees and charges. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 9E, consider-discuss act on structurally balanced budget policy. Greg.
So I was reviewing, in review of all of our policies, financial policies, and this one came up as a policy that I don't have. And I was recommended by the Government Finance Association, National GFOA. And what this is, a structurally balanced budget policy goes a little bit step beyond what we have as statutory law for Wisconsin municipalities that requires us to have a balanced budget, which means that you have to have, you know, zero growth essentially. Structurally balanced takes the next level saying, hey, balanced budgets are great, but let's make sure that you're balancing your budget with operational revenues and expenses versus maybe balancing your budget with a land sale or balancing your budget with something that's not sustainable over time. So essentially that's what this policy is defining, that we are ensuring that we are covering recurring expenditures, payroll, those types of things that are going to happen year after year with revenues that are recurring as well. So it's really the gist of what this is doing. It doesn't mean that we could never draw off of reserves if we had to, like we did in twenty twenty-one's budget after COVID. But then you would have a, a, a plan in place to get right back into a structurally balanced budget as well. We're doing this in the village, we've been doing this for years, we've been doing it before I even got here, so this isn't something new that, it's a problem, it's just something that we should define and put a policy towards.
I'll move to adopt the structurally balanced budget policy.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the structurally balanced budget policy. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Nine F, consider discuss act on a recommendation for naming of the park on Element Way. Rex.
Okay, as most of you know, we are soon to be building the park on Element Way. Construction is planned on, with a July start. And we're going to need a park name. So there's a couple of ways we can go on this. Historically in the past, two options can stay at the park board and then village board level if there are a specific name that the, the internal committees would like to propose. And that's where we are right now is to talk about a, a, a name that has been brought forward by one of our park and village board members. Option number two is to open up the park naming to the general public. We've done it both ways before. The last time we did it, it was with Sand Acres Park. I'd probably say if we were to open it up, the process would probably take about three months or so, but we do have a, a, a name from the past that is certainly worthy of, of recognition. That's of Jerome Van Systeen. Mr. Van Systeen was a state senator from Ashwabanon, served nineteen seventy-six through nineteen ninety-two as state senator. He was also on our town board and was also on the Brown County Board of Supervisors. So certainly it's a name, in fact, it was a name that was brought up, I believe, when, for, it was suggested by someone for the Sand Acres Park area back in the day. So certainly a very worthy name as well. Park Board had some discussion at this level. Ultimately, they voted in, in favor, unanimous favor to, for Jerome Van Systeen and forwarding it to the village board now for further discussion.
And I just wanted to add a few things. A resident had reached out to me asking for me to put this forth for Mr. Van Systeen. I did speak to the family and see if they were okay with that or if they were supportive of it. They were very excited and thought it would be a great honor for their father or their grandfather. So they were there. Also, Mr. Van Systeen did serve this area, this was a part of his ward when he served as a village trustee, and he lived over on Lyda, which is really close to where this park is. So I personally feel he, it would be a great honor to have him, the park named after Mr. Van Systeen.
I, I don't have a problem naming it after Jerry Van Systeen. He, he was instrumental in the seventies, eighties, nineties in our area. And I agree, Tracy, it is in the wards that he served, so I, I don't have a problem with that.
Rex, has any other names been brought up?
Uh, no, we, we haven't gone out to the general public. This is only discussed internally at park board level and now village board, so no.
You know, I think the Van, the Van Systeen's name's been around this community for a long time, but I don't think there's anybody living here anymore. I think the two daughters moved to Manitawak, if I'm correct.
No.
Kim's in town, yeah.
Kim's in town and Tony's in town.
And the granddaughter's in town. The daughter and the daughter.
But, but the immediate family, I think.
Both the daughter and the granddaughter live in town.
There's actually both, yeah, Tony and Kim.
Yeah, live in town.
The, the daughter?
Yes.
Oh, wait a minute, I forgot one, you're correct, you're correct, yeah.
Yeah, the son.
The other one, the other one moved to Manitawak. Okay.
If there's no other discussion, I make a motion to name Element Park Jerry Van Systeen, after Jerry Van Systeen. That's the new park name.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to recommend, or to name the park on Element Way after Jerry Van Systeen. Any other comments, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Nine G, consider discuss act on resolution R five dash one dash two five, supporting Brown County to purchase new ES and S DS three hundred voter tabulating machines. Okay?
Maybe if I unmute my mic. So Brown County purchased the current voting tabulators on behalf of all the municipalities in Brown County dating back to two thousand and eleven. Those are the DS two hundreds. We are now looking to replace the existing tabulators with the DS three hundreds, which is the new version. The original tabulators were expected to last about ten years. They're on their thirteenth election cycle. In order to have a countywide tabulation system and reporting mechanism, each municipality needs to be on the same election equipment to tabulate results at the end of each election night. And so each municipality is being asked to prepare a resolution supporting the county's effort to finance and fund the purchase of the replacements of the existing DS two hundreds to these DS three hundreds. In the event the county doesn't fund them, there will be a point where the, the village may need to look to replace its existing tabulator systems. I had suggested to the clerk that we would just go back to hand counting the, the results if the county was not willing to pay the tab. So I, we'll see if that stands, but we'll see if the county will first support the funding of the municipalities' purchase of these new tabulators. This resolution just supports that effort. It makes no financial commitment to the village at this time.
Anything to keep it safe? Maybe the hand way is the way to go, Joel.
Just as long as we don't have to count hanging chads, I think we'll be all right.
Oh, yeah.
All right, I'll move to approve.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R five dash one dash two five to purchase new DS three hundred voter, voting tabulating machines. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Nine H, consider discuss act on the bid award for the Cormier Roads Concrete Sidewalk Reconstruction Project. Brian Rickert.
All right, so in front of you guys tonight, this is a project that was previously approved in our two thousand and twenty-five capital improvement plan. We did compile the plan in-house, we sent it out to bid, received bids from two qualified bidders. We did set up the plan. You'll notice when you look at the bid tabs, there's a Schedule A and a Schedule B. I will explain that to you further in the conversation. We did receive bids from Al Dix and Martell Construction. We are recommending to go with alternate B. Alternate B does include essentially to replace all of the sidewalk on the north side of Cormier from Shady to Ridge. You'll see that that dollar amount i- in the schedule, so you have Schedule A and Schedule B, they're in columns there. To Al Dix Construction is two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. That's replacing all the sidewalk on the north side of Cormier. We are also recommending that we do some spot repairs on the south side. So this project did come in under budget. The budget was three hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So we're recommending to also add spot repairs on the south side of Cormier to repair that sidewalk. So with that, if you guys have any questions, Ali will answer them at this time.
Brian, where's Al Dix Concrete out of? Are they local? I've never heard of them before.
They're out of Kekana.
Out of Kekana? So have you worked with them before and?
I have.
Good contractor?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bid for the Cormier sidewalk of two hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Any other discussion? To Al Dix Construction, I'm sorry. Any other discussion, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Nine I, receive, accept an update on the village's large item collection operations. This has been a real treat, huh, Brian, this month?
Yeah, this, this has been quite a task. So you guys are probably well aware, we did make some changes, one, one of this year to our large item collection. Historically, we did collect items every month, the third full week of the month. We would go through and drive all a hundred and five miles worth of roads in the village looking for items to collect. So what we did require this year, we did get rid of large item collection. We only do it the months of April through September. Following that, you're also supposed to do some self-reporting. So you actually go onto an application, which is web-based, so as long as you have the internet, you're able to go to our website. You can request curbside pickup for large items. With that, we go from point to point to point throughout the village and collect brush, or not brush, large items strictly from those areas. This month, in the month of May, we had four hundred and twenty-eight requests. Believe it or not, in total, we picked up eight hundred and seventy-eight locations. That means that there was approximately five hundred and twenty-five locations that had items out, but did not report them to our application. So even though, if you look on the map here, you'll see the green arrows. I'm just zoomed into a location here. All the, the gray As are the locations that we had to add. All of the green triangles are locations that people did do and use the application correctly. You may be aware that we included all this information in our newsletter. We also included it in a mailing that we sent out to every home, pushed it out on social media many, many times, and still our communications are not getting through. So we are going out, our code enforcement officer, along with our summer help seasonal within our office, they're going out and they're putting door flyers on each one of the homes that we had to add. So we had to do a special pickup at those locations. So all five hundred and twenty-five of them. They've already completed three hundred and sixty-five locations, they have a hundred and sixty-eight remaining. I assume that they'll be nearly done by the end of tomorrow, stopping by each one of these homes and giving them information in an attempt to educate the locations where they just put items out but didn't use our application. Our hopes are is that in time what'll occur is that you'll ultimately be able to just drive to these point locations in the village and pick up large items at those locations and not have to drive all of our heavy equipment up and down all of our roads, burn all the fuel, spend all the staff time doing so. With that, this month, there was twenty-nine, well, no, there was, let's see here, twelve issues. When we say issues, people maybe put out a refrigerator, people put out a tire. Of those locations, of those twelve, three of them actually did request to have pickup done through our application. Thankfully, we were able to notify them. We had an email address or a phone number we could call, make them aware that, hey, we're not going to pick up your deep freezer that you put out curbside because we have to pay to get rid of it, and that's ultimately not an item that we collect. There is nine of them that people just put stuff out that we do not collect. So what I'm looking for is if there is any sort of feedback you guys are able to provide and how long we want to continue to try to educate our residents. You know, do we want to continue to do this through the end of the year, give them a few more months? But ultimately, if we do want this program to be successful, we're going to have to at some point in time, you know, take a hard stance and say, hey, you have to use our app. We do also offer, say you do not have internet access, you can just call our office, we will add it for you. What we're trying to do is create some efficiencies. It used to be we would start and stop our large item collection five times a week because we would follow our garbage routes. Our guys may get done at ten o'clock, they may get done at one o'clock. And then there's that, that awkward second half of the day where, you know, say you're going out and crack filling, you have to heat up the tire kettle for three hours worth of work. Where if we can get the items out curbside Monday morning, we may be done by Tuesday, allowing for three full days worth of work to do additional activities. So with that, open any questions or comments?
Brian, I was wondering what the hell you were going to do this month about that? Because everybody I looked at had something on the curb, and I wonder if they called, which evidently the majority of them, half of them did. You know, the only question I got on, how long are you going to put up with it? How long are you going to educate them?
That's a question I have.
I don't know how you can fix something.
Right, right. I mean, ultimately, the, I would say this month is probably from a volume standpoint is far greater than any other month. We're just coming off from our big rummage sale, our village-wide rummage sale. So people that didn't sell items at the rummage sale likely put them out curbside. We also didn't provide it in the month of April due to the draft. And people, you know, obviously we didn't provide it in January or February. We did provide it in March, but at that point in time, it's a little bit early in the year for people to do spring cleaning, you know, dive back into their garage and find those items that they've just been sitting on. So with that, yeah, ultimately, just curious if you guys have any sort of input. I mean, by all means, we can definitely try another month of trying to educate.
I think, Brian, I think the way, you know, what you're doing and putting the tags and going out there, the code enforcement officers doing that, I think that's very valuable. I think you're going to need to continue that because if you think about how long it's going to take for people to cycle through the other communication, people just don't find that. They don't read that, and, and you guys know that.
Yeah, we're finding that out.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, to be quite honest, you got half of them right now. That's not bad, you know? But I, I think you're going to need to continue it. I would even suggest that you might have to continue it for the remainder of the months this year and then pick it back up next April again. Because they're, they're going to be, they're going to forget, and then they're going to go back. And unfortunately, I think you probably got a year worth of education to do here yet, would be my feedback. And then, then at that point, yeah, now you're going to start doing the cold turkey and, and having to cut them off, but I see no way that the residents are going to pick up on it until it gets that far along.
One of, one of the things I'll just add to Brian's information here is that prior to this program being implemented, we did not have GIS data that we could use or manipulate. So just having the program in place has been extremely helpful. We can now find who those frequent flyers are for who's putting stuff out, large items that haven't put in the request. So that eight hundred and seventy-eight got picked up, five hundred and twenty-five roughly did not register. We now know by, by address what, who those five hundred and twenty-five properties are. And if we see that repeat occurrence, then we can target it differently, whereas before it was just, like Brian said, just driving up and down the road, every single street the entire week for that large item pickup. So I think this is going to add some efficiencies, even if we have to pick up for those few months, that we can start seeing and targeting communications to the appropriate people.
It's definitely a step in the right direction, but yeah, it's going to take a while to educate. Because unfortunately, there are a lot of people out there that they don't, they, they aren't trying to do something wrong, they just don't know, unfortunately. So yeah, that education I think is going to have to continue until, because there's a lot of people, they don't, you know, they don't put out large items that often, and all of a sudden they're going to do it, and, and it's like they're going to need to be educated, unfortunately.
How long is it going to take for some of these people to understand that, Jay? You know, pretty soon you got to do something to say enough is enough.
But Gary, how many years have we done it the other way?
I didn't, took me a long time to get a full-time code enforcer. Now we got them hanging stickers on a door?
Yeah.
He's got better jobs to do than that.
Don't disagree. I mean, there's also other guys that Brian could use to be putting the stickers on the doors too, so.
I don't have the right guy, but.
Well, and I think with what Joel was saying, with us having the GPS on here and knowing exactly what properties are not doing it, that helps a lot. Then maybe the next time they didn't do it again, you leave a letter, you say, we're not picking up at all this time. This is your second time, you should understand this now. So you're going to learn that way. Unfortunately, a negative thing people remember more so than a positive thing. So I, and I agree with Jay, it's going to take, I think it's take a year. And one other comment I'd had, I had a couple of residents that didn't call in and didn't understand it, but did get the letter with the water bill, and they felt the letter was not clear. Because it was, it was kind of vague on whether you should call or not in a way. And I read through it, and I can't remember, but there was a couple of words in there that I thought could have been a little clearer. And I have that information at home from the people that had mentioned it to me, and if you'd like that, I'd be happy to pass it on to you, just the way that they thought it was confusing a little bit.
Yeah, by all means. I know one of the things that we, with our first letter that we sent out, because there's been two letters. been two letters, one of the feedback that we got is, first letter, you used a GIS application, and I know that's feedback that we got from Jay, that only people that live, work in this industry know what GIS is.
Yep.
So we, we've tried to use some terminology and language that's a little bit easier for the standard resident to understand.
Second letter was much better.
Yeah.
You know, it's, but yeah, it, people just ignore the letters, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Somebody had mentioned to me today that, Jay, I think at one point, you had mentioned something about, about putting a sticker on their garbage that would remind them all the time, hey, register your large item pickup. I don't know if that's a possibility.
You know, you could still go and do something like that, but okay, we got half of them covered already. So I don't know, now is it worth to go do that now? We've already done half of them.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the alternative is, is okay, you just cut them off cold turkey, and now you got a bunch of crap sitting out on your streets all the place.
Right, yeah, that's not good either.
Unfortunately, Gary, guess what? The code enforcement guy's going to have to go there and give them a ticket then.
Yeah.
Then you're going to take them off.
I like that right away.
You will, as long as they aren't in your, as long as they aren't in your ward and aren't calling you.
I don't care, you know. Brian, that's good information.
Yeah, I think, you know, we, we've talked about some other solutions, too. I mean, outside of issuing a citation, we could pick up and issue a service charge. We've talked about doing other alternative communication pieces, like we got these beautiful large garbage trucks that have nothing on the side of them, maybe putting a big graphic with Gary's head on there and a big smile.
There you go.
Did you register for your large item pickup?
Oh, that's okay with me.
We can do some fun stuff to kind of draw attention to it.
That, I like your idea. Overall, Brian, I think the feedback is, it's definitely working, it's definitely heading in the right direction. I'm sure you're seeing some savings of time, not as much as you want at this point, but I think you're going to get there.
I, ultimately, yes, I do think it's going to pay off. I just want to make sure that we, we stay committed to it. You know, at some point in time, we're going to have to have that cutoff, because if we don't ever have the cutoff, we might as well not have the application, so.
Correct.
I agree with that, that's what I was going to say. I'm, I'm fine with, let's, you know, stay the course for the foreseeable future, but I think we need to have a stop date. And I'm not opposed to the, the centralized drop-off idea either. I mean.
The what?
What we do for this municipality is amazing. You don't go right to the, they have to bring it to like a certain, you might have like five sites in the city where you bring your large items, and then they collect them all from there. They don't have to go to everybody's address.
We've tried, years ago, we've had a, a system where you could bring your stuff, and the people screwed it up and we discontinued it. Well, they did, you know? All of a sudden, they thought it was a garbage dump. So, you know, the idea's good, but if people would follow the idea, it'd be great, but it.
Okay, you got enough feedback, Brian?
Yeah, it sounds like we'll stay the course, potentially for the entire year. And ultimately, what I can do is, maybe not in June, but in July, I could provide another update, not take up as much time, but just, it'd be great. If you guys in the loop, it'd be great.
I think, I think the numbers will change, too, with the fact that we don't have the draft this month and go into next month, so.
You know, we got enough excuses for them this month.
Okay. Okay, moving on to number 10, items for next agenda?
Just a question on the nuisance ordinance, where we're on that, and if that's coming back soon.
The nuisance ordinance, Joel? Did we change that?
I'm presuming that that's related to the industrial zoning standards? So like performance standards?
Yes.
I don't know exactly what the schedule is for that particular ordinance, but it could be as, as soon as next month, if that's something that's desired from the board. I know that there's been some conversations with some residents in the area to provide feedback. I don't know that their, their input at this point has been consistent with the direction from the board, so we have some conversations at the board level on that, as far as, you know, taking it beyond, beyond just a simple performance standard ordinance. So we can kind of talk internally and provide an update, I think, at a minimum to the board for the next month.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, number 11, closed session items. During the meeting, the village board, the village of Ashwabanon, may convene into closed session pursuant to A, B, and C on your agenda. I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved, second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please.
Trustee Service.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
President Kardasky.
Yes.
Trustee Krieger.
Yes.
Trustee Flukie.
Yes.
Okay, we're in closed session. Thank you, everybody.